Okay, good morning, everybody. This is the TCTV Commission meeting. We're gonna call a meeting to order at 8:00 AM. Oh, Jeff did make it. Wow. Hey, Jeff. Hi, Jeff.
Hello.
Perfect timing. Okay, so the only person we're missing is Amy. Hopefully she'll jump on. So let's see, is there any public waiting to speak, Bill? No? Okay, so public? None. So we got, sent out the January minutes. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to take a look. So I need a motion to approve.
I'll, I'll move it.
Thank you, Jens. Second? Vince, thank you. Any discussion, corrections, updates? All those in favor, raise your hand.
Hi.
Alright, so we're unanimous? Unanimous. Okay, so I'm gonna share my camp, my share my screen and show you where we are on, I think I sent this out, but maybe I didn't. This is where we are on spending. Can I see it? Okay, can you guys see this, my screen?
Yep.
Okay. So that is spending so far this year. We are, I think, in pretty good shape. We've got March, April, May, June. Four months to go. So we're in, I think we're in good shape. We've spent our capital. So we're on track. Think to finish the year fine. Any questions about this fiscal year that ends in June? Okay, so, so here's the budget for next year, starting July 1st, 2024. So, we approved it in January, presented to the first selectman. She adjusted some of our numbers. Videographers down to 20,000, which you know, we tend not to spend all of this budget, so I think we'll be okay there. She did adjust down the supervising producer line, which is what covers Laura and Matt. I did make the case at the Board of Ed hearing on Tuesday that we really need 51, and Laura, I don't know about you, I felt like there was receptivity to that idea by the Board of Finance. So, we'll see what they do. As a reminder, they're the only ones that can raise the number back to the first selectman's number. I mean, back to the original request. We got everything else we wanted in terms of line items. We were asking for 25,000 in cap X. They took it out of the fiscal year and put it in, I think it's the last ARPA tranche. So when that process starts up again, which I I did email Maria Perez, and she said, after the budget stuff is done, they will then figure out what they're gonna spend the rest of the money on, so I'm okay with that, as long as we get as long as we can buy this equipment some way. So there may come a time when we need to do a little more advocating for it, so I will let you guys know when that is. The Board of Finance seemed to understand. They had some questions about this, so I think they understood what, what we were saying we needed and why. And we'll have to see once that process starts, if there's, if there's gonna be any challenges there. Bill, any comments on that process that you know about?
Uh, sorry. Repeat the process, the question?
This is the, our capital expense request was Vicky said she wanted to use the remaining ARPA funds for these expenditures, and when I emailed Maria, she said that that process hasn't started yet, so I didn't know if you knew anything else.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what the procedure is going to be, but I know all that needs to be run through the Board of Finance, Town Council and all that.
So, you know, I took the opportunity to go through this with the Board of Finance, so that they had a, you know, a look at it, knowing that it was gonna come up in front of them again, and we'll do the same thing with the Town Council. So questions on this?
I have a comment. I think the two top items, the Pearl Nano and the Netgear, I think there are two due to redundancy, you know? We could live without them theoretically, or maybe not just theoretically, but
Well, nobody's pushed back on this yet, so we'll see what happens, yeah.
It was, it's just a comment.
Okay, other? I think, well, I think we'll have to see what happens when the ARPA process starts and whether we're gonna be pressured to reduce the amount at all. Okay, so I'm gonna stop sharing. Back. Okay, and the one, the one thing on the finance is that, Jeff, I think I, I had sent you something asking if you could kind of dig into the the Board of Ed account info that's tied to us, and didn't know if you had an update on that.
Well, I mean, I responded to yours, basically when we had the, when Jeff Hackett was leaving, he kinda went through all the budget items. And these lines are pretty much it's like a shared, it's tech district AV slash channel 17. And I, and my guess, again, I didn't, I didn't create these line items and codes was more for when Sean was there, because Sean would do all the AV for the district. So when he went through each line item, he's like, this is, this is the line I do for like AV parts or for projectors and stuff that die in the classrooms. The instruct, the equipment instruction is for, if a smart board dies. Most of our equipment, like probably 80% of our equipment is 10 years older. And that's one of the things I've really been pushing for. So, but he didn't mention anything like, you know, 4,000, this goes for equipment in channel 17 or anything of that. That's why, you know, when you would ask me about those budget codes, you know, and I asked you for the line items, just to make sure I wasn't missing something. The only thing I could say going forward, if I know September, because I start my budget process in October, then we'd have to do narratives in November, and then present in December. If I knew ahead of time, I, you know, you were doing this, I, and again, this is my first run through it. I would have put a, a bigger block in there, and if they said, hey, why did this go up 20%, I could say, well, channel 17's doing an upgrade and they asked us to put our portion in. You know, so, I mean, currently, there's really, even though the name isn't there, it's not really, you know what I mean? I know the, because I went through the last three years of spending, and it's all classroom equipment.
So what it sounds like is, when Sean left, Jeff just said, okay, we don't have any responsibility for
I mean, I don't wanna put words in Jeff's mouth. I don't know that, or, you know what I mean, but, but it's, I think that's, I mean, again, this is just my guess ation of it, but it's, it seems like it was linked, because that was the department Sean did, because he supported 17, and he did our district AV.
So what I was, what I was trying to get at was what it was actually spent on, to make sure that there wasn't anything that was still being billed to the Board of Ed that we weren't aware of. That, that's what I was trying to get at. So if, if you could kinda either get me the information, because Laura and I can pretty quickly
I can tell you, I went through the last two or three years, and there was nothing spent on channel 17. It's all
Jeff, Sean wasn't there at that point. Sean left in 2020, so you, if you wanna see if anything was spent towards Sean's role, you would actually have to go from March 2020 backwards.
No, what I'm saying is, these, these line items, there's nothing billed, meaning
Right, but what I'm saying is, if the money was used towards Sean's role, his role at Trumbull High stopped in March 2020. So if you wanted to see what prior spending was, I think you know, like 17, 18, 19, 2000, you know, 2017, 18, 19, 20 would probably be more accurate in that regard, is all I'm saying. Because once March 2020 hit,
Yeah.
he was no longer an employee.
Yeah, I mean, like, like I said, I did, I did go back three years. I mean, I, I can go back further, but I'm just, you know, there was no, I mean, I could see where the, when they redid the auditorium, that was in there. You know what I mean? Because it's district AV. I, I didn't see, you know, again, anything like equipment-wise that went to channel 17. And again, I'm not saying, you know, I'm just saying, if you tell me in September, we're gonna, we're planning on doing this, I could put a portion of it in mine and see if I can get it through. You know what I mean? I'm not saying that the Board of Ed has no, you know, me personally, obviously, I'm gonna, I wanna be part of the team, I'm gonna try, try to push it through, but, you know.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a note of that, that if there's anything for next year's budget, we need to get on it early and
Yeah, it would be 25, 2016, yep.
Or, but September is when that process starts, Jeff?
Yeah, generally, usually October, early October, they start, they start thinking about the budget, and I had, you know, preliminary meetings, but I know by November, we have to put our narrative in, and they present it, so, yeah. So if you tell me in September, I could at least put it in there and explain why that, you know, why that line's gonna go up 20%, because I have to do a narrative, so.
Awesome. Okay, notes, so noted. Thank you. I appreciate you looking at that. And let's just take a pause here, because Mike Hoga just joined, who we haven't seen before. Mike, hi, how are you? C-House Principal, replacing Todd, who moved up to the principal job at Trumbull High. So Mike, what, would it be helpful if we went around and introduced ourselves real quick? So
I, I was here last month. I, I remember everyone.
You remember everyone. Okay, cool. I obviously don't remember. Jesus, sorry about that. Alright, okay, so anything else on finances? Anybody have any questions or comments?
Nope.
Okay. Programming, Laura, you're up.
Programming, um, general programming, we are plugging along. It's budget season, excuse me, so that's been a big portion of the programming. We have, it's kind of programming slash technical, but the new V-Mix has been installed in council chambers, yay! So Bill and I have been working with the videographers to get them up to speed on the system. We had some training, and in hindsight, I think the way it should have been done was you know, kinda doing a preliminary one-to-one training where the videographer, sorry, hold Sorry, my dog is very upset that my husband dared to go upstairs. Anyway, so I think what, you know, the, my goal was to get the videographers comfortable with using the V-Mix the same way they use the Tricaster. A lot of the training was showing them all the fancy bells and whistles, which is great, and I definitely think that we should be and will be using that, but I, you know, like, they need to crawl before they can walk, and then they need to walk before they can run. So they're not quite running yet, but we're getting there.
So who's trained, Laura?
Dennis, Arnie, Richie, and myself.
Great.
And Michelle Marmina over at Board of Ed, again, is also trained, but she's a little bit more you know, she's more advanced, obviously, because she's been using it longer, and I think it was a little easier for her, because she didn't have a comparison. So I know there was a lot of, you know, concern and nerves about switching over to the new system. But I mean, I think everybody's doing a great job. That's been most of the general programming. We're gonna be starting sports again in the end of the month. The spring season starts, and I've got a whole whole schedule of home games, volleyball, baseball, softball, field hockey. And those are all being covered mostly by the students, which is fantastic. And, yeah, there hasn't been a lot of original productions, again, just because of everything that's been going on between budgets and V-Mix and all that other stuff, but
So that, so V-Mix is the name of the new system?
Correct. So we could kinda do a find replace. Anything where it said Tricaster, we, I'm now referring to it as V-Mix.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, you wanna mention the library programming you emailed me about yesterday?
Yes, there is, channel 192 from Charter is coming to the Trumbull Library in April, and it's going, they are going to be talking about public access programming and their capabilities in the Newtown studio. As you guys know, TCTV is education and government. We are not public access, however, I am going to contact the library to see if the speaker will let me come in and give a little plug about TCTV, that we do have videographer opportunities, and we pay. So, sorry, hold on.
So the idea is to see if we can piggyback and get some videographers that won't have to go all the way to Newtown to
Well, they can do, if they wanna create their own programming, they'll have to do that, because TCTV doesn't provide that opportunity, but, you know, we are, as you guys know, you know, and I, as Kate and I explained Tuesday to the Board of Finance, you know, student videographers are going to turn over fairly quickly. Our videographer, aside from Matt, our videographer roster and Garrett, you know, are like myself, no spring chickens. So, you know, we do wanna get some more people in the pipeline and ready to do that, so I thought that this would be a great opportunity to get people interested, not just in making programs, but giving them an opportunity to make some money recording events.
Laura, if, if somebody wanted to produce a program related to government or education, is that something we would could equip and?
It would have to be, this is where it gets a little, I don't know what the right word is, but we're not a production facility, so TCTV would have to produce it. So it could be done, but it would have to be, you know, like with us driving the pro, the, the, the project. Because as I said, I mean, we've had, in the past, we've had citizens around election time wanting to create their own election-related programming using our equipment and our videographers and our editors, but that's not, if you look at our mission statement, that's not within our purview, because through the FCC, we are education and government. We don't have that public access component.
Thank you.
I mean, if somebody wanted to pitch a show and be, you know, a program consultant or whatever, I'm absolutely open to that. But I, I don't want anybody coming in thinking, you know, they're gonna sit there and be like, okay, now you're gonna do this, and then on this day, it's like, you know, it has to be more of you know, a TCTV-driven project, but if somebody has an idea and can help us with putting us in touch with, you know, people that they think should be interviewed and can provide us certain information, I'm certainly open to that.
And if they wanna be part of the production of that, again, under our direction?
Right, right.
Okay, anything else on programming?
Um, nothing that I can think of off the top of my head.
Okay, uh, Trumbull High Studio status update.
Um, we're still, oh, we have two new cameras. I still have to swap them out. We bought the smaller Panasonic HCX, HXC 2000s. They're the smaller ones. I need to install them, so those, that should be an easy switch over. Because the ones that are there are the old field cameras, so it's like, we're slowly replacing things and getting them new. We're slowly getting the 10, 12, 15-year-old cameras out of rotation and getting newer, smaller equipment in. The PC that runs our teleprompter software died, and I know that that was not new when I got there, so we purchased a new laptop for that. And I just have to get the software up and running. There's just been some issues with getting the licensing code. I don't know if the trumblesps.tv email address had already been used, so I'm just still wrangling with Magic Q to get that done. But, you know, we've got everything, it's there, it's ready, you know, it just needs to be put in place, ready to go. I purchased, as you guys remember, I purchased a photography backdrop stand for the election night programming, but what we had used was two black sheets, so Kate had, you know, I had purchased some actual backdrops, which is really nice, so instead of using sheets, we're actually using real photography backdrops. I bought one black and one green, so we could do green screen, hoping that at some point when there is a TCTV club, if they do morning announcements, and they wanna do something in front of a green screen, we have the capability in addition to just the painted wall in the studio. And I got a steamer, because obviously, we can't be ironing backdrops in the studio. So that is, yeah, that's the high-level stuff, and then you know, again, studio slash technical. As you guys may remember, Tim from DNR had come in and for, to help with election night, and he had said that, again, the quote that Kate had mentioned was hopefully going to be in the next round of ARPA funding is to upgrade the studio equipment to give it a little bit of TLC, because a lot of the wires, as Jens, you'll recall, we were trying to trace wires, they're not labeled correctly, so he would go in, clean that stuff up. The PC that's running Windows 7 would be replaced, and hopefully, we would get something that runs a little bit faster. And then again, just for your edification, Jens, the purpose of that Pearl Nano, the encoder that we have now, which was installed by HB, is not being supported, and the reason is because Diversified Solutions bought out HB, and Diversified's client base is like Fox Sports. You know, we are kind of a little piece of dust on their roster, so you know, there's really no support for that, and then the Pearl Nano would be, you know, if, assuming that we go ahead with DNR's proposal, everything would be integrated, they can access it remotely, so if there's any issues, then it's not a matter of crossing our fingers and hoping everything works.
Yeah, that makes sense. So, so put, put the old one up on eBay or something like that. While it's still, while it's still worth something.
Exactly.
I mean, seriously, because, you know, you get
Why not? Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, council chambers, we talked about that. Anything else to add on it?
Um, no, it looks great. It's really cool. Bill and I were playing with the live streaming on Monday, and just a really cool thing that I wanted to share is that when there is a Zoom component, the monitors can be set up, so that, I don't know if you're familiar with the layout of chambers of where the monitors are, but if you're in chambers, I'm assuming everybody knows what it looks like. So there's two monitors that face the audience. And for, you know, what we've been doing is, and then there's also two monitors on either of the side walls behind each of the rows of tables where the council members sit, so they can look across the room to either the presentation or the program that's going out. And what we've been doing so far is having the outgoing program on the monitors. So people in the audience can see what's going out on the stream, what's being recorded. But Bill and I, you know, what we were, realized that we're able to do is that when there are true hybrid meetings, the monitors that are on either side of the council chambers, we can flip to Zoom. So if there's a Zoom, if there's a Zoom meeting, they can look and see like what we're looking at now, like the whole Brady Bunch setup. And then the council chambers audience members will still see the program going out. So we can do that, and then the Zoom panelist will serve as just another camera in the lineup that they can use similar to the Board of Ed presentations. So that was, you know, it, it's gonna require a little bit of finagling, but we've figured it out. And then I think that's about it. Am I forgetting anything, Bill? Or Matt? Matt was with us on training as well.
I think that covers it.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Okay, good. All right, backup storage, we made the decision to go to seven terabytes of cloud storage, but the one thing we still needed to do was to develop a station policy for archiving. So are we anywhere on that? And what do we need to?
I've, I've been, I've dropped the ball on this a bit, but we do have a general framework. We just have to basically, we've done research into what's required in certain areas, and we just need to document it and then present it to the team, which we will do by the next May meeting. Does that make sense, Jens and Laura?
Yes.
Did, did I get you the Cindy Katski's response on what the town policies are? I did, okay, good. Alright.
How about the Historical Society? Did they come in with anything? Did we ask them?
I, I didn't
Are you calling up with that, Laura, or was I doing that? I didn't, I didn't have that on my list, but
I did not have that on my list either, but I was just in touch. I actually know the person who runs Historical Society, so I will contact her.
Cool.
And then ask if they have a timeline. I would think that some of that programming, you know, we'd wanna keep, like, I know that there's some stuff from like One Book One Town that was celebrating an anniversary of the Little League team winning the World Series. I think that's the kind of stuff that we definitely wanna keep. So I can definitely go, I can certainly go through the archives over the summer when we have downtime and see what kind of programming we have that we may wanna keep longer term.
That's a good idea.
And definitely, you know, for lack of a better term.
Yep. Good. Okay, closed captioning. Instructions on the website. I meant to check, and I didn't look. Laura, are we good?
Um, I, the YouTube, the YouTube instruction video that I'd sent to everybody is on the homepage, and that's running.
Okay.
Um, excuse me. Oh, the other thing that I wanted to mention, speaking of YouTube and Facebook, is that on Facebook, I have been posting, Bill and I decided that we are going to, the station will stop streaming events to Facebook and then move it, move the live streaming events to YouTube. We just decided on April 1 as an arbitrary date, but the first selectman said that she wanted that to happen as soon as possible, so I've changed the little graphic notices from, you know, we're moving to, we've moved. So I've, you know, put up the, all of our, all of our live-streamed events will be on YouTube, and then I've given the link to that YouTube page.
Alright, so no more Facebook?
No, that's correct.
Is, is there any particular reason for that, or is it just to keep things simpler?
Uh, two reasons. I think it's just to keep things simpler, and the Board of Ed meetings, the comments were getting a little, I mean, Bill and I had to stay on top of it and hide them, and it was a little hairy. I could not find a way to disable comments, although on YouTube, we can.
That's fair enough. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and that'll help too, again, with like graduation and sports and other events like that. I would rather disable comments because that's not the purpose of us live streaming.
And then you don't have to monitor two
Exactly.
Streams, okay.
One less, yeah. Because there was a recent Board of Ed meeting caused a number of comments, and Bill, neither Bill nor I were available. So we were a bit, of course, the, the meeting where everything goes, you know, pear-shaped, we were not available to hide the meetings, so, or the comments, rather.
Okay, and then closed captioning on the TV feed, did, did we table that, or?
We, we as a station had tabled that, because the quote, I believe, was several thousand dollars. And we felt that based on feedback, we were not we were not seeing that, hearing the demand.
Let's
Except for Tuesday. And we, we also felt that too, because, because we are going to livestream all meetings held in council chambers, actually, all meetings processed through the V-Mix, whether it's in chambers or Board of Ed, will be livestreamed. Those will be saved to YouTube, and YouTube can closed caption those automatically, so that was another reason why we didn't feel that it was necessary.
But just a quick comment, do we know that there's no guarantee But just a quick comment, do we know that there's no guarantee that YouTube keeps our videos, right? We we don't pay them to store them.
No, but that, and again, that's another, that that was when we were talking about archiving, that was another question, uh, question mark. That we knew was unresolved.
Mm hmm. Okay.
Hold on, I'm just taking my notes. Okay. Anything else on technical issues?
Yes, um, I have one more item. Uh, right now, our, we have a bulletin board system that runs um. Ten second, either static or video images between shows. And it just runs, it's called a carousel, because it runs like a carousel slide projector indefinitely. And at the end of shows, it just hops in where it left off, and then when the next show begins, it cuts out. Now, that carousel system is. Obsolete by Cablecast's um definition. It's just like they're not, any new customer is not given that option to have. Um. So I was quoted, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at my email really quick. Um. Robert Smiths. Um. So he had said, um, I'm gonna. That a one-to-one replacement. Yikes, for the carousel, um. For what we have would be about thirty thousand dollars, but we could combine the. I I I'm not sure what all of these servers are referred to, but they're, the less expensive way. Uh, would be about twenty-three thousand. Now, this doesn't have to be done now. This is not an urgent thing. This is just. Things to think about for the future, um. Because the last upgrade for our hardware for the station was in twenty eighteen. This would, like I said, Bob. That my rep from Cablecast sent this saying, this isn't urgent, doesn't have to be done right away. Your system is fine, it's still usable. They're just not. Cause what happened was I upgraded Cablecast and I hit a snag with Carousel because. The software that they pushed is not applicable to the Carousel server. So it just kind of hung up and hit a glitch, so they had to reset it. So um. I'll forward that information to everybody. Again, it's not, this is not a fire drill, this is just. Keep this in your back pocket at some point when the hardware gets updated. Hopefully not for another. Four, five years or so. Um. This is something that you should look into.
Was there, I think we need to figure out if there's some other technology we can use to. Create the same functionality, because that just sounds like an outrageous amount of money to me. I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely.
We don't need to do anything right now. And I don't know if there are other, again, I don't know if there are other solutions. That total number was to upgrade the VOD server, the Flex Light Content Server, that was all the servers to my understanding. That was not just a swap out of that Carousel server. So this is like, when you guys need to upgrade, like, remember how in twenty eighteen we had to shut down the station and swap out those servers? When, you know, when that time comes, again, these are things to think about. It wasn't a, you've got to do this and. Put aside that thirty grand now. This is like down the line.
So it looks like though we're going to need to do some research around this, because the four to five years, I. Think it's going to be sooner than that, that we're going to need to address this. So. Jens, maybe you and Laura can work together to start to get a better handle on like, okay, what are we going to do here? Cause. Um, I think that interstitial programming is valuable. And I don't think we want to lose the ability to do those bulletin boards.
Right, because we do a lot, again, the Historical Society does use those a lot. They, they've been requesting. They more than anybody else have requested that we, you know, have utilized that service. Um, I mean, again. Worst case scenario, I can create. Interstitials that run on the state, you know, that just run between programming as on the content server. But, you know, I I think the other question that I need to have for Cablecast is. About how many years left do you think that Carousel system has, just to see exactly how urgent that question is versus.
So I would say we need to act on this in time for net, for the next budget cycle.
Right. I think we just need an idea.
Find out all that information, so we need, so we know if we're going to have to put it in next year's request.
Right. My hunch is no.
Okay. But I don't want to, I don't want to be like scrambling in October to figure this out.
Agree.
I'd rather wait, I'd rather wait. Uh, uh, these things get cheaper and cheaper every year and. Technology could change it. If we're talking four to five years, I. I I think next year would be premature.
But I want to, I want to know that four to five years is, that doesn't sound realistic to me. Because that would put our system, if we, if we put it in twenty eighteen, that put it, make it ten years old or twelve years old, so. That seems to be an issue for us when things get to be that old.
Well, and I think, like I said, I think the conversation was. At some point in the not-so-distant future, your servers in general will need to be upgraded. So that was the quote for the servers to upgrade everything. Not just that bulletin board system. That was the, the shows, you know, the, the. Shows that go out to the station and to the website, the Carousel Bulletin Boards and the Video On Demand Server. So that would be to replace everything. So that would, you know, that that's what those refer to. As opposed to just.
I have to, uh, I have to leave for my next meeting. I just wanted to attend when I could.
Thanks for being on. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
See you next time.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, any, anything else on the technical front?
Um, nothing that I can think of off the top of my head.
All right, well, let's move on. Go ahead, Jens, sorry.
I was just going to say, um, graduation, we need to keep that in mind. And and plan for it.
Yeah, my, my plan is to put the hub, um. What I, well, the good news is we have three camera links. Right, so we can still do the three cameras on the field. And what I would like to do is hardwire the hub into an Ethernet port. In the press box, and I've spoken to Jeff about that. Um, and I'm going to loop him in when planning begins. So that we can start that conversation earlier rather than later.
So Mike, are you in charge of a graduation like Todd was?
Yes, I am.
Yay.
Yay.
I was about to, yeah, and then I'd be like, oh, what am I, what am I, what did I get myself into here?
Oh, it's so much fun.
But Laura, Laura, we should meet because.
Yeah.
Even the camera links, any, anything wireless.
Absolutely.
Will be crashing, so we would need.
Absolutely, and I think, you know, I think possibly talking to Jeff about setting up, I don't know how easy it is to create. You know, i- its own network, maybe, you know, just call it graduation that only our equipment gets on. Would be ideal. I don't know how.
No, the, the whole Wi-Fi spectrum will, will be, I mean, it'll be challenging to do anything with two thousand people with mobile phones, just.
True.
Okay, let's talk about it.
Yeah, absolutely, because I, yeah.
Okay, that will be added to the agenda going forward. Thank you, Jens. Okay, anything else? Okay, marketing PR.
Um, I have some goodies for you guys. Yay. Uh, we got some super cool hats and beanies. Hold on, I'll be right back with some uh demonstration items.
Some swag. They really, they really did come out very nice.
I don't look good in a baseball hat. So we have um. Baseball hats. And we have these really cool, they're fleece lines, so they're super comfy beanies with our logo on them. And uh, they look great. So I have some for everybody. Um, just let me know how you would like me to get them to you. If you want me to pop them in your mailbox, I can do that. Um, Mike, I can walk them down to you. Bill, I've had some in my car and I keep forgetting to give them to you. I should have given them to you on Monday. I apologize. So um, yeah, Matt's got his. So it's great. The videographers have already been wearing their hats. Every time I see them in chambers, they've got them on, which is great. Because that way. Um, and I got to give props to Arnie, because he had said, hey, every time I come in and ring the bell, you know, I sneak in when somebody's coming out, they give me a dirty look, like I'm going to go in and. You know, do something, you know, sketchy. So he suggested, you know, could we get like hats or something? So um, yeah, that started that. So and then we got the beanies, Matt and Richie now be wearing them at the football games to uh. Stay warm as it gets cold out. So and the student, you know, some, the students have them. They've got their, their choice of hats, so. I've got plenty for everybody. So let me know, um, you know, if you want me to pop them in your mailbox, where to do that, and I'll get you a hat and a beanie. So.
And they really are nice, very nice.
Yeah, they're really, they're really well, they look great.
Okay, last thing on the agenda, the Trumbull High connection. Laura, my, my last note said we were going to try to meet with Mike specifically, as I, I'm not sure if that's correct.
Yeah, I think we talked about just talking about how we can uh amp up uh the, the connection between Trumbull High and you guys. Um, two things I just want to report about to, to the team, let them know. Is that um, all our morning announcements are now on big screens in the commons. Um, so. Teachers submit um, uh, a Google slide to me and I kind of doctor it up and and post it, so. We have about thirty Google slides currently being broadcasted in our commons in our senior lounge. Um, so all, you know, Todd does go on to the loudspeaker to do some announcements. But any major morning announcements are, are posted for students to see all day in our commons. So that's a huge upgrade for us already. Um, and we also talked about a um. Video production, how, how can we use the studio more? Um, so in the works, it, because it is budgetary, right? We currently have a digital media class, and I'm proposing for the twenty-five, twenty-six to have a digital media two class. In which they do morning announcements every day. Um, so it, again. Monetary budget issues, I was kind of too late to the game, but we are proposing a new course for twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, called Digital Media Two, in which will be a full year course, in which students will be able to live broadcast um, or, or tape things. Um, in the TV production room that we currently have at THCS. Um, so. We're working on announcements, our, our broadcasting, and we are looking to move forward with a course here. And get students credit for, you know, all those great work they do for, for the uh TV production class. Um, so we're kind of credit and announcements, so we're kind of moving forward slowly, but, but hopefully we'll get there in, in the next uh year or two. So just want to report that out there.
That's awesome.
The monitors, they look great. They look really great. Um, and the other thing I wanted to mention, Kate and Mike, thank you for mentioning that. Um, when the Trumbull High Winter Percussion Ensemble had a big competition. In the gym, I was able to livestream, I set up a camera. And just recorded no audio, the show, and fed it through into those monitors. So um. That could be, you know, not that we ever want an indoor graduation, but should that happen. Um, we could, there is, that gives us the possibility. You know, for overflow from the auditorium, which is a nice option to have.
Absolutely.
And also athletics did the same thing. We hosted um the state competition for cheerleading. So every single cheerleading team was here at Trumbull High School, and we had the competition. So one team was in the gym. I mean, the rest of the teams were in the commons, uh, watching it live. Um, and we also did that for our wrestling. So we hosted the class, uh, double L wrestling tournament. And we had, you know, the only, the, the participants were in the gym and the other athletes were in the commons watching it live. Uh, so a great update, you know, a great uh update to the digital stuff here going here at THS and. Laura, you know, was a phone call away to, to help us uh set those up also. So thank you to her.
Very cool, very cool. That is, that is awesome to hear. Okay, does anybody have, oh, uh, Fairfield U intern is our last item.
Um, yeah, I have not been able to move forward on that. However, I do have some good news. Um, well, bittersweet good news. Uh, I do have somebody to help us work on our social media presence. Um, Vince and Jens and Bill will remember Katie Dunn. She is, Ed, I don't know if you know, you know Katie? Okay, great. So um, she is back in town for a little while. And she's going to be helping us. Um, she can also help us remotely too. Um, while, because she's in the Boston area. Uh, yeah. So she could potentially be our, you know, like, keep her on as our social media person, and I'm fine with that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that would be great. I mean, we could still, you know, and then we could sort of. See how that goes and see where, you know, if an intern is still somebody. Or, I mean, or we could even go in and just see if the students are interested in being videographers. Um. So that's where we are with that. So like I said, Katie will be, you know, she's in town, in and out, um. Her, you know, she's having some family and medical stuff happening, which is bringing her back. Um, which is, again, that's the bittersweet part, but it's wonderful, you know, that she'll be back in town and that she's willing to help. So um.
Right.
She's already in the system, so just, you know, have her keep her hours and turn them in. Um, Laura, you and I should talk about her rate, but. We have money and, I mean, she's wonderful. I would, I would love to have her, yeah.
She's awesome, and she, you know, she does a lot, she does a lot of photography too. She's got a great eye. She's. So, and she, she had mentioned that um, a friend of hers is an influencer. I think she's been doing some photography for her. So she's been, you know, she's a quick study too. She's like a sponge. So she's been picking up a lot of. Social media stuff, so I think she will be a fantastic addition. Which is.
And she can do the social media stuff remotely, so I'm, I'm hundred percent on board.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Awesome. That's, that's really, that's great.
I'm very excited. Yeah, she's excited. I'm excited. It's, it's a win-win. My Katie is um Trumbull High alumni, and she worked at the station for. She was a videographer throughout high school, and then she joined me in. The office doing a lot of pre-production, post-production videography. Um, she's fantastic, super smart, really just on it. And uh, then she left TCTV. She has been, you know, she's done production work on feature films and TV shows. So um, I know the writer's strike kind of put a lot of bumps in a lot of people's careers, but um. She's up in the Boston area and we're really excited to have her back. She's our first success story.
Yeah, yeah. Very, very cool.
Yeah.
That's a good, that's a good note to end on. So does anybody have anything else? Um, just a reminder, our schedule, our next meeting's May second, so. Uh, and then June thirteenth, I don't know where um. Where graduation is sitting right now, but that's probably right around that time, correct?
Yes.
Graduation's uh June tenth right now.
June tenth, okay, so we need to make sure.
Share my schedule or?
Yes, please.
So I wanna, um, I have, uh, my wife and I have decided we're moving out of state in a couple of months. So the May second uh meeting is going to be my last meeting officially as a uh. Part of this commission. And uh, I just want to apologize that I haven't been able to. Uh, stay on and, 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 and do all that I had hoped to when I originally signed on, on board. Um, but just uh getting to spend time with y'all is, is a, is a great joy. Thank you.
Well, we'll, we'll wait to say, are advised, uh, the next, at the next meeting, not quite ready to let you go, but.
Kate, should we do it at the studio and maybe have uh?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Bagels?
Yeah. I think at the studio is a good idea.
I'm happy to host.
And then, and then Mike can come up and see us.
Yeah.
Or over and see us, whichever way.
Billy, you're always welcome.
Oh, he's, he's happy where he is. He doesn't.
Oh, I know he is, but you know. He, he is still always welcome, even though, you know, if he wants to stay at home, I get it.
So Ed, too, if you have any ideas of people that we should be looking at to um. Not that replacing you is exactly possible, but to fill your slot, I think you've, you've added um. Perspective to the group that has been well worth it, and we certainly appreciate. The time you put into it. So. We'll, we'll talk more about that at the next meeting. So Laura, you will plan to be at the studio and we'll, we'll figure out something nice to do. Okay, anybody else have any other questions, comments?
No.
Um. The Board of Finance vote is the end of the month, Bill. The Board of Finance vote is the end of the month, Bill? Ish?
Um, it's twenty-ninth Tuesday.
Okay, and then we'll have one more round of presentations um to town council, so. Uh. I don't know if that'll be Zoom or in person. I think they tend to do in person, but I can't remember from last year, Bill. Just cause there's so many of them, but, um.
Okay, the budget voting session is Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, my, my number mixed up, so twenty-sixth and they're at town hall.
Okay, um. And then the town council hasn't put their schedule out, though, their hearing schedule, have they?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Alright, well, we'll let you know, usually Laura and I handle that, but if any of you wanna jump in, um, we'll get to the info. Okay, anything I've forgotten, anything else we need to? Talk about, think about? Alright, great, we finished in time, thank you, thank you to everybody for your time this morning. Um, and we will see you in the studio on May second.
Bye, everybody.
Alright, bye-bye.
Bye.